I'd like to call this meeting to order. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing the following changes to participate in and public comment for all planning commission meetings until notified otherwise. The council chambers will not be open to the public. Any member of the planning commission may participate from a remote location by teleconference. This meeting will be webcast and accessed at the City of Clovis website. For written comments, members of the public are encouraged to submit written comments at the city's website at least three hours before the meeting. You will be prompted to provide the following: the planning meeting date, the item number, your name, email address, and your comments, please limit it to 300 words or three minutes. Please submit a separate email for each item you are commenting on. Your item will be read into the record during the public comment portion when the item is heard. Any portion of your comment extending past three minutes will not be read aloud due to time restrictions, but will be made part of the record of proceedings. Please be aware that any public comments received that do not specify a particular agenda item will be read aloud during the general public comment portion of the agenda. If a written comment is received after 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, efforts will be made to read the comment into the record. However, staff cannot guarantee that written comments received after 3:00 PM will be read. All written comments that are not read into the record will be made part of the record of proceedings, provided that such comments are received prior to the end of the planning commission meeting. For verbal comments, if you wish to speak to the commission on an item by telephone, you must contact Orlando Ramirez Deputy City Planner at (559) 324-2345, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the meeting. You will be asked to provide a telephone number to call you during the meeting. You will also be asked for your name so that you can be reached, you can be called when it is your turn to speak. You'll be called during the comment section for the agenda item on which you are wishing to speak. You may be put on hold until your name is called by the meeting coordinator. You will be able to speak to the commission for up to three minutes. For notice public hearing, all public comments must be received by the close of the public hearing period. All written comments received by the close of the public hearing period will be read aloud by a staff member during the applicable agenda item, provided that such comments may be read within the three minutes allotted to each speaker. Any portion of your comments extending past three minutes may not be read aloud due to time restrictions, but will be included in the record of proceedings. If a comment on a public hearing item is received after the close of the public hearing, such comment will be treated like a general public comment and made part of the record of proceedings, provided that such comment is received prior to the end of the meeting. I would like to have everybody stand now for the flag salute.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call?
Commissioner Antuna?
Here.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
Chair Hatcher?
Here. And can we have approval of the minutes?
So moved.
A second.
I had a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Chair Hatcher, to approve the minutes for April 9, 2020. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
We have a five oh.
Are there any commission secretary comments?
Staff has not received any additional correspondence leading up to this hearing from any of the applicants or concerned residents, but we do have City Planner Dave Merchant, who has a comment as well.
As we have mentioned before, we appreciate your bearing with us during this awkward time for conducting public meetings and public hearings in particular. Some of you may know from watching the city council meeting earlier this week that our protocols are continuing to change to provide additional access to the public. Anything that the city council talked about earlier this weekend, set in place, won't be enacted this evening at your planning commission meeting. But you may be interested in, in particular, watching the next couple of city council meetings on the 4th and 11th of May, and 11th in particular, where one of the projects that you previously considered had quite a bit of public comment will be in front of the city council. So some of the things that the council will be looking to do at their upcoming meetings is to shorten the period of time in where comments are due in advance of the meeting and to ensure that comments that, all those comments that request to be read into the record will be read into the record and that there'll be an opportunity for some level of live interaction between the audience and the council. The council will also put in motions and plans to add video to, public video to the process that may take a little bit longer. And the general expectation, but at this point not requirement, is that the planning commission's protocols will mirror the councils and will implement those beginning at the May 28th planning commission. So nothing that we need to do this evening, but if you're interested in how it may play out, you may want to watch in particular the May 11th city council meeting where that one big planning item will come. So that's all I had to add, and we'll continue to roll with the punches as they ride.
Do we have any planning commission member comments? Commissioner Bedstead, you have any comments?
I do not have any comments this evening. Thank you.
There are no other commission members motioning they have a comment? Do we have any communications and referrals?
The only thing is Commissioner Antuna was handed a copy of the Brown Act for her records.
And do we have any business from the floor? This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on any member, on any matter that is not listed on the agenda.
There was no one on the line for that, so we do not.
And do we have any consent calendar item?
There was nothing to add to the consent calendar item.
Moving on to our first item, consider approval, CUP 2020-002, a request to allow for an onsite brewery production operation with associated inside and outside consumption within an existing building located at 527 Park Creek Drive. Gary Shabazian, owner, Central California Brewing Company applicant, Don Anderson representative.
Thank you Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. Just to introduce myself to those out there in the web, I am Lily Cho with the planning division, and I'll be presenting to you a conditional use permit 2020-002. So CUP 2020-002, as Chair indicated, is a request to allow for the use of a tasting room with the brewery operations proposed within an existing building located at 527 Park Creek Drive. The project site is located, or centrally located, within the city's Dry Creek Industrial Park, and is about .86 acre in size, and is also considered a through lot with frontages on both Spruce Avenue and Park Creek Drive. Site plan review 2019-02 approved development on this site with the construction of just under 15,000 square foot building with the overall height of 20 and a half feet, and with architecture that is really typical of industrial areas, including corrugated metal, stucco, and brick veneer. Improvements also include parking and landscaping. This image here is the north frontage of the project site. As you can see, it is currently fenced off, but the applicant do hope to be able to modify that fencing. This is the elevation on the north end. This is the driveway corridor looking south from the north end. And here is the south elevation. And the south elevation again looking towards the entryway to the office portion of this building. And here is the eastern elevation of the building. As you can see, there are several roll-up doors. So in regards to surrounding uses, the areas that are indicated in green are primarily used as offices. In purple are businesses that are more industrial manufacturing warehouse type, and in pink is currently, that parcel is currently utilized as a storage yard for the associated office building to its west. And in light blue is a recently completed development that as of two days ago is unoccupied. And in orange is a project that is currently under construction. All other parcels in this, in aerial view anyway, are undeveloped. So the northern user, or the user on the north end of the project site, is Grizzly Construction. And to the west is Andrew Tool Concrete Incorporated. To the east, there are two parcels. The northern parcel is utilized by Glass Pro. And to the south of that is the unoccupied development. So this area here is generally considered Dry Creek Industrial Park with a land use designation within the city's general plan, land use diagram of industrial. The areas in purple are zoned M1, which is a light manufacturing zone district. And with this proposed use, the beverage manufacturing portion of it is a use that is allowed by right in the M1 zone district. However, the tasting room portion is what is triggering the requirement of this conditional use permit review. So moving on, Central California Brewing Company is a partnership of seven individuals, some of which have over 10 years of experience in brewing operations, and also like to indicate that these members are all local as well. This project proposes a bifurcated old business model, or also known as a split business model, between the manufacturing and tasting room operations. Manufacturing will involve brewing of craft beers, and there are seasonal seltzers and ciders that use local products. Operations will be from Monday to Friday between 6:00 AM and 2:00 PM with the use of the product for in-house sales as well as outside local and regional sales. The tasting room operations will include beverage cores, tasting flights, packaged to-go containers, prepackaged snacks, and onsite rotating food trucks, which will be reviewed through the food truck permit, which is also known as the administrative use permit. Operations for the tasting room is proposed at, from Wednesday through Sunday, between 3:00 PM and 10:00 PM. However, the applicant did request that we extend weekend hours from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, requiring the modification to condition number 14. Applicant did indicate that they anticipate about 50%, 15% of their patrons between the hours of 3:00 PM and 5:00 PM on weekdays, with the majority of their customers expected after the work hours after 5:00 PM. And with this use, applicant intends to create an at-home feeling that's family and pet-friendly. Applicant also proposed to host selected events showcasing their products and collaborations with other local businesses. They do anticipate to have one event per month, depending on demand and reasonableness. They do also concur or agree with condition number nine, requiring that events that draw in large crowds be submitted for review and approval by the Planning and Development Services Director as well as the police chief 14 days prior to the day of these events. In regards to operations in the building, the office footprint is indicated in purple, and manufacturing and storage areas are indicated in blue. And in regards to manufacturing, it'll involve the use of two silos or grain bins that are indicated in the two yellow squares you see next to the parking area there. With, the silos will have a footprint of about 10 feet by 10 feet. They're about 29 feet tall and have a yield up to 22 tons of grains. And with that, the applicant anticipates to have deliveries, grain deliveries by semi-trucks once every eight to 12 weeks. And the interesting thing is that after the grains are utilized, they are removed daily and picked up by local farmers and utilized as feed for cattle and chickens. In the red is the indoor consumption area that will consist of a bar as well as seating areas. And in the green is the proposed outdoor consumption area that will be gated, of course, and will have seating areas and various outdoor games. And they wanted to, the applicant indicated that they wanted to create a backyard environment in that area there. Also like to note that no speakers or live music will be permitted in the outdoor area. Moving on, these are conceptual of some potential modifications to the existing elevations as well as the site plan. As indicated, the applicant did mention potentially modifying fencing on the, the fencing on the north end of the building to something more like a wrought iron to create a more welcoming ambiance. And in addition to that, applicant has discussed potentially installing a decorative class roll-up door to provide ingress and ingress between the indoor and outdoor consumption areas. And of course, site improvement will include additions of the grain bins. In regards to parking, there are 19 existing onsite stalls. The applicant was also able to acquire a parking agreement with R.L. Davidson at 425 Spruce Avenue, which is highlighted in green in your, in the exhibit. They were able to obtain an agreement with four 10 parking stalls that's located on the eastern boundary of that property. With that, the total parking for this use comes up to 29. And typically, a use like this would require 37 parking stalls, however, with the supplemental parking by parking agreement, as well as the split model of operations where the majority of crowd is generated during the after-work hours and weekend hours. On top of that, the proximity of this site to the trail systems, in which I'd like to indicate that letter from Caltrans did highlight that they appreciated that this was considered, the trail systems was considered, as well, as well as utilizing, the applicant utilizing incentive to have people use the trail systems and not drive to their properties. And then, of course, modern day, the modern day ride share and services such as Uber and Lyft is used regularly these days. With that, with, with all of that, staff is comfortable with the reduced parking proposed for this project. Staff did, however, include a condition of approval to allow for this project to be reheard by commission within a year from the first day of operation if parking ever did become an issue out there. With that being said, staff recommends that planning commission approve conditional use permit 2020-002, subject to its associated conditions of approval with the modification to condition number 14 to allow for the extended weekend hours between 11:00 AM and 10:00 PM. This concludes my report, and I am open for questions.
Does any commission member have any questions?
Lily, I do have one. The applicant has requested to be, or hours of operation from 3:00 to 10:00. Do they foresee changing that and extending the hours of operation maybe from 3:00 to midnight or anything different like that, or they're pretty set on this time?
Yeah, you know, we actually brought that up for them, but I don't think they, they actually didn't foresee doing so, but maybe Londo can elaborate.
Right. In previous conversations with the applicant, it is a family-run business, as most of these brewery types are, so they do have family lives that they have to go to as well. So extending the hours beyond that would be a challenge, would be a detriment for them as well.
Commissioner Cunningham, Ms. Cho, I have a couple of questions. First of all, the, this brewing company is supposed to, or wants to have a microbrewery, that's my term, microbrewery, onsite, and packaged snacks. I presume they will be consumed onsite, is that correct? Or we don't know?
The packaged snacks are snacks that they will be selling, they're not manufacturing the snacks, right, exactly.
Well, my, my question is couched in alcoholic beverage control licensing. I know there's different kinds of licensing for different kinds of structures, and one of them is a bar/restaurant, and that's, at least it used to be, that was a much more expensive license than just strictly a bar. And if I understood your presentation correctly, that was, their intention is to use a food truck, I presume for the food portion of it, but keep the entities separate in essence. Now, where, in your diagram, where was this food truck?
I didn't provide that, my apologies, I didn't provide that. That's going to be reviewed through the administrative use permit, but let's see, I think they're proposing their food trucks along the two, adjacent to two of the roll-up doors in this area here, so to be within this general area.
It'd be on the east side, that would be, okay.
Right.
That's, that's, it doesn't impact us or what we do here tonight, but I just, I presume through the administrative use permit, you'll kind of explore that issue with ABC to make sure that the beverage control license doesn't run afoul of what they're proposing, what they're intending to do.
Yes, that is correct, and that's something that we can do as well with through the administrative use permit.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Paul Hinkle. I have a question. Their hours of operations for the brewery part to the public is Wednesday through Sunday, and they're, now they're moving it from 3:00 to 11:00 to 10:00 PM. If they decide they want to be open Monday and Tuesday, do they have to come back before us, or is there something in here that allows them to be open on Monday and Tuesday?
Right, so for the tasting room operation, is that?
Yes.
Okay, yes, so the condition did not limit them to expanding to Monday and Tuesday as well. It was, the condition only limited the hours of operation of their operational days. So yes, they did indicated that in the future with demand, they may, they may open on Mondays and Tuesdays as well for the tasting room portion.
Okay, so they don't have to come back before that?
Correct.
Just if they wanted to change the hours even to earlier? Or later they would?
Right, yes, so this request, the request to modify was just for the weekend hours.
That's just weekend hours?
Just, just the weekend hours that they're requesting to extend from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay, then if they were to change the hours during the weekday, they would have to come back before us also?
Yes, the condition did indicate 3:00 to 10:00 PM, but they did indicate they were not interested in operating beyond 10:00 PM.
Yes.
Yeah, and with their split business model, the manufacturing portion isn't completed until 2:00 PM, so they want to leave that additional hour between 2:00 and 3:00 to just get ready for their, the tasting room operations.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions with staff?
No questions at this time.
Is the applicant here, or did they submit?
Yeah, Don Anderson is on the line, and he has an associate with him as well, and they'd like to present.
Yes, hi, Don Anderson here. Sorry, were there, were there questions directed at us at this point?
No questions yet. Did you have a statement you wanted to provide first?
Yeah, no, and we certainly appreciate your, your time under these kind of interesting circumstances. You know, our original goal here was to create a craft brewery environment that was found most commonly in larger areas within California. I think you're going to see models like ours already up and running in San Diego, in the Bay Area, and we really wanted to bring that here to the Valley because there's kind of a shortage of those venues here, and we felt like we could fill that gap very nicely. It's not just about making and selling, you know, alcoholic beverages, beer and seltzers and ciders for us, it's more about bringing in our partnerships with our local farmers, using their stone fruit in our, in our beverages, and really kind of creating a multi-community experience across the board. Again, a little bit different than I think what we see here locally. So, you know, the project itself fits very nicely here in Clovis. Our proximity to our, our business partners is, is well noted there, and we're very excited to, to get this off the ground, especially with the proximity to the trail. I think that's been kind of a hub for everybody. So at this point, we, we appreciate your consideration in moving forward.
Thank you. Do I have any commissioners with any questions for the applicant? Okay, seen then, Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I will open it up to the public for any comments in favor or opposition.
As of 3:00 PM, we have not received anything from the public.
Okay, I will bring it back. Commissioner Bedstead, do you have any questions or comments?
You know, I just have one comment, actually a question rather, for, probably for staff. With regard to the trail access, is there a direct access to this business park from the trail, or is there one planned at some point?
Currently, there's no direct access, however, there, the trail system is adjacent to the business park, and there are sidewalks around the business park. I know there might be potential in the future at the end of the cul-de-sac on, if I could find, I don't think I have a really good image, but potentially in the future, it may, I, I don't know the feasibility in discussion of this, is opportunity to provide a bridge over this area here onto Dry, over Dry Creek, onto this trail over here. So that might be potential in the future. I don't know if Sean has any more to add to that?
Hi, this is Sean from Engineering. That is the planned location. That was set with the track map that establishes the alignment of the streets and the initial configuration of the lots.
Thank you for answering that. I, I think this is a, an interesting venue as described and laid out here, and I think that the trail system being right there is, is a great feature. I like that the applicant is encouraging and promoting the use of that, having a bridge over that, I think would, would really further enhance this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also like to close the public portion, forgot to do that. Do I have any other commissioners? Do you have any final comments? Commissioner Antuna?
I do. Question for staff, Lily. Can you elaborate a little bit on condition number 18? My direct question is, it sounds like it's an option to bring them back to review the parking in a year. Can that be modified to actually have them come back in a year?
Yes, if commission wishes, we can modify that to do a mandatory one-year report. Yeah, but that was intentionally written as an option just in case parking didn't, you know, does become an issue there.
Right, I do support this type of business. I've, I've been to areas that have this type of business, and it's really great. I'm excited that they're bringing it to Clovis. I think the location is really... I'm excited that they're bringing it to Clovis. I think the location is really fantastic as well. I'm concerned with the parking, although it sounds like businesses will be opposite. The businesses that are out there currently operate during the day, and this is going to be an evening operation. So it, I don't anticipate having severe parking problems, but we won't know that until they've been in operation for a while. So I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I'd like to make it mandatory for them to come back within a year to see us. We don't know how parking is going.
I think you would just motion that.
Commissioner Cunningham, do you have any comments? Does the applicant have any final rebuttal?
No, not at this time. We're pleased.
Seeing none, does anyone here want to make any motions?
I do have a comment. Condition number 18 was actually incorporated by the city attorney's office in case we do have an issue in the future. If there's a request to modify the condition, it would be condition number 17 regarding the ability to review at any time. In addition to the, also addressing the parking situation for Commissioner Antuna, had this come in as a 2,800 square foot bar, it would require 29 parking stalls. So if we're using a split model to review this, technically it would meet the parking requirements if it came in as just a bar at 2,800 square feet, which is their operating area that they're requesting.
Thank you, staff. All right, Commissioner Hinkle?
I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP 2020-002 with modifications to condition number 14 from two, 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Saturdays.
I'll second that.
Quick question. Would it only be modified on Saturday, or would it be Saturday and Sunday?
It's the weekend, so Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, Saturday and Sunday.
I'll second that motion, since parking, it sounds like it would have been within reason.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Hinkle, that was 11:00 AM, not 3:00 PM.
I'm sorry, yeah, 11 to 10, yes, 11 to 10. The modification from 3:00 to 11:00.
Thank you, city planner.
11:00 AM.
Thank you for bringing that up as well. So I have a motion by Commissioner Hinkle, seconded by Commissioner Antuna, to approve CUP 2020-002, subject to modification to condition number 14. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
We have a five zero approval?
And is there any old business?
No old business.
Okay, no old business. Any new business? No. Okay, seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:32 until our May meeting.